Is there interest on the part of the council to know if the speaker is from this city? List a residence in this city or outside the city?
In the cities, Mayor.
Ms. Bixler is from Pasadena, according to her card, and Ms. Bletcher is from Los Angeles, West Olympic Boulevard. Ma'am?
Greetings. I've lived in the city of Pasadena for 34, almost 34 years. I am against it because I feel like we can have residents of Pasadena do the same thing. I have been, and other residents of the city of Pasadena, my neighbors, have been paying for spaying and neutering for, ever since I've been here. Thirty years ago, I had a feral cat dump kittens, a litter of kittens on me. I placed the three males, I spayed the female, and then unfortunately she came back. She dumped another litter of kittens on me. At that time, I took the kittens down to Long Beach No Kill Center, and then I spayed the mother, so that was sort of the end of that. Fast forward six years, I caught a feral female, I took, had her spayed at the Pasadena Humane Society, it was free. I took her back, I had to take care of her, I had to feed her. Well, I put food on a table. Unfortunately, the skunks came. They could not get on the table, the posips could get on the table, and so could this really big raccoon. And so I let the raccoon eat. Anyway, that's been my experience. My experience of myself and my neighbors have spayed and neutered other cats of neighbors as well as feral cats of the area, so.
I'm with the California Responsible Pet Owners Coalition. You all have copies of our letter. In that letter, I quoted extensively from the Fix Austin blog, who is against mandatory spay and neuter ordinances because they are ineffective wherever they have been tried. Thank you also to the council people who recognize the lack of credulity of the statistics cited in the staff report. They're ludicrous. Unfortunately, also, early spay and neuter in animals has lots of adverse physical effects. UC Davis, in conjunction with the Golden Retriever Club and the AKC Canine Health Foundation, did a study on juvenile spay and neuter. Animals are experiencing increased rates of cancer, increased problems with structural health, increased temperament problems. Also, the statistics on bite prevention as a result of early spay and neuter are inconclusive, so much of the staff report I would question as being poorly researched, unfortunately. This regressive laws do not work wherever they have been tried. Statistics have increased, and the health of the local animals has decreased. People become scofflaws because they are afraid of being caught by these regressive laws, so rabies vaccination goes down, animal care goes down. Also mentioned in the study, it states that mandatory spay and neuter will reduce owner turn-ins. However, in our still poor economy, people are turning in dogs because they can't afford to spay and neuter their animals. How will this increase it?
Ms. Bletcher, would you bring your statement to a conclusion?
Thank you.
My name is Marla Taucher. Good evening, Council, Mayor. I am an animal attorney. I practice predominantly in the area of animal shelter law and animal control law. I want to make very clear, I'm not opposed to spay and neutering. But what I am opposed to is laws that have the potential to disproportionately affect lower-income people. And when you start to pass these kinds of laws without the infrastructure in place and without the possibility for low-income or for low-cost spay-neuter options, you really run into problems. And you run into problems that do have a disparate impact on your society. As I said, I'm not opposed to spaying and neutering. But there are, this has not been effective where it's been tried. Laws are only as effective as their enforcement. But you can't enforce this in a way that's going to impact one group of society more adversely than another. And that's what's happening in a lot of areas. Look around at Riverside County, they're having a lot of problems right now. This is exactly the kind of thing that can land you in court. When you start to enforce these laws in a manner like they have been, they're having a lot of problems right now. So don't follow their model blindly off a cliff. It's not a good idea. You know, I just, I just don't know that you have the infrastructure here. I don't know that Pasadena Humane Society alone can provide the number of spay-neuter surgeries that need to be provided. I think this money and this effort would be much better spent on educating the public and on providing the resources, providing a voucher program, or something that will actually make this a possibility rather than punitive measures. They don't work. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Honorable City Council members. My name is Jessica Lauren, and I live in Pasadena. I do a lot of animal rescue work, and I see way too many cats and dogs that have been abandoned, neglected, or abused. There are tens of thousands of them on shelters and on Pet Finder. We owe it to them to help bring down their numbers and prevent any more suffering. I fully support an ordinance that requires the spaying and neutering of all cats and dogs, and I urge you to not delay one more day. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Barb Telesmanic, and I am from out of town. I drove four hours here from San Diego. I own three pit bulls, and I'm the co-founder of SoCal Pitbull Team. My one dog buddy is a complex-rated certified therapy dog, the highest rank a therapy dog can achieve. I'm also a registered nurse and have a specialty certification in pediatric oncology. And part of what I do professionally is to describe and apply treatment protocols. Our oncology team explains universal standards of care to families when their child is diagnosed with cancer. We tell them that the treatment regimens are founded in evidence-based science, years of research by experts, and approved by review boards to reduce best outcomes. Now, if we proposed a treatment plan that had no basis in science, never been peer-reviewed, had no backing by any accredited medical organization whatsoever, and was actually proven to be ineffective, our hospital would likely lose its accreditation, and our patients would seek treatment elsewhere. You're asking the public to ignore some of the most compelling studies done on dog bites and behavior in the past three decades. You're asking them to overlook experts from the American Veterinary Medical Association, which boasts 84,000 members and is a collective voice for the profession, who in 2013 published in their professional journal, "Why Breed-Specific Legislation Is Not the Answer," or the National Canine Research Council, who in 2013 published the most comprehensive and intricate study of dog bite-related fatalities to be completed since the 1970s. It states that breed plays no significant role in fatal dog bites. You're asking them to overlook experts like Dr. Chris Irisari, Ph.D., professor of genetics, genomics, and bioinformatics at Western University, who states that a pit bull is not a breed of dog. A dog that is labeled a pit bull is a genetically diverse group of purebred and mixed-breed dogs with a variety of individual personalities and behaviors. It is impossible to apply breed traits regarding health or behavior to this genetically incoherent group of dogs. This pertinent and thorough data has clearly demonstrated that assigning dog bites to breed is considered unscientific and obsolete.
May I ask you to bring your statement to a close?
Sure. I just have two more sentences. Community-based approaches to dog bite prevention and holding all dog owners accountable to the same standards of care have been proven to be the most effective and recognized methods for decreasing dog bites and keeping communities safe.
Good evening. No, I'm not from Pasadena, but I train here. I belong to the Pasadena Obedience Club, and I show at the Pasadena Kennel Club shows. I also belong to the council, obedience council. I am highly involved in obedience training. I also belong to the California Federation of Dog Clubs, multiple rescue groups, and breed clubs. You've heard the statistics, you've been given the statistics. Now you need to look at them in reality. First off, the bit about the cats, that came from HSUS, and they've been throwing that around for 10 years, and it's not accurate. Secondly, what you're doing by making mandatory spay-neuter is you are decreasing the number of purebred dogs. As a severe allergic patient myself, I am allergic to about 95% or more of the breeds. I can only live with a purebred dog. And I was a novelty as a child, because I'm not 29. The kids today have a lot more allergies. There's many more of them that have that problem. A few years ago, we were engaged with AB-1634, Lloyd Levine. He's kind of disappeared because of that one. A young man came along, and he wanted a button that I had that said, "No AB-1634." I told him that he could have the button if I explained to him what it meant, and it was a mandatory spay-neuter law for the entire state of California. His father thought it was a great idea when I explained that that meant no dogs or cats...
Ma'am, how long will your statement?
No cats or dogs would be able to have puppies or kittens. The little boy thought about it, and then said, "And just where am I going to get my puppy when I'm old enough to get my own?"
My name is Jade, and I am from Pasadena. I'm here to oppose MSN because I cannot bear to see my dogs breed. The Alaskan Malamute, one of the last 10 remaining American pure breed disappear. Two, my dog Diesel is already six years old, happy, well-adjusted, and a majestic creature. Diesel will suffer long-term physical, mental, and emotional arrested development if he has to be castrated. Three, studies have shown significant problems with early spay and neuter, and over 85% of the dogs registered are already spayed and neutered. This is additional tax that many people cannot afford. Therefore, I am urging council not to pass MSN because it directly affects Diesel.
But I'm here to ask you guys to please adopt a mandatory spay-neuter ordinance for all dogs and cats in this community.
Thank you very much for accepting public comment. I am just here to say that I fully support a mandatory spay and neuter ordinance, and I hope that you will push this forward. Thank you very much.
Yes, I'm from the city of Rancho Cucamonga. I'm actually a former shelter employee of the city of Rancho Cucamonga. And I wanted to again address some of the issues that were in the Pasadena Humane Society report. I was actually just on the website for the low-cost spay-neuter program, and what's interesting is that what's already been in place is mandatory low-cost spay-neuter for pit bulls and chihuahuas, the dog breeds that are coming in the most within the humane society. This program has already been in play for several years. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes. So when you actually look at the report that was pulled by Pasadena Humane Society, when they're talking about their outcomes for 2013 to 2014, 2012 to 2013, which are the two breeds that are coming in the most?
Pit bulls and chihuahuas.
Pit bulls and chihuahuas. Thank you. So, again, mandatory spay-neuter. It is a great idea, spay-neuter is important, but unless you are really going to have the infrastructure to help support these communities and the pet owners, it's not going to work. It already isn't working for your low-cost program for pit bulls and chihuahuas. The demand is too high. It really is. That's why you need to focus your efforts on education, community outreach, and programs that are going to help owners keep their animals. Sometimes it's a matter of a couple hundred dollars. Somebody can't afford a surgery. But hey, they may end up having to give up their animal. Why not have an intervention program like Downtown Dog Rescue? That'll help these owners. Again, spay-neuter is great. It's important. And the people who got up here and were arguing against it for their breeds, if they had read the ordinance, you guys have already said breeders are exempt to it, which is a little silly, but, you know, let's take it one step at a time. Thank you.
I'm an owner of two pit bulls. I got them fixed at five months. They have no behavior issues at all. They're not suffering from any depression or anything like that. So any of that kind of talk about my dogs are going to suffer from being spayed and neutered, it's, it's just a load. A big, I'm a big supporter of spay and neuter because there's a lot of backyard breeders out there, and we need to leave the breeding to the responsible people, which is the AKC, UKC. I mean, especially with pit bulls, you see a lot of backyard breeders. You could buy a pit bull off the internet for like 50 bucks off a Craigslist. So we need to cut down on that. That's why I want actual spay and neuter. Thank you.
My name is Christina Cho, and I'm a resident of Pasadena. I'm here to support an ordinance that requires all cats and dogs to be spayed or neutered. There are too many unwanted animals in the city, and we have the ability to decrease those numbers. The only way we can reduce the number of animals who are suffering in abusive or neglectful homes and the number of animals who are dying in shelters is to prevent them from breeding. On that note, I would also like to say that the American Kennel Club does not deserve a seat at this table. The AKC is responsible for animal homelessness and the deaths of unwanted dogs and cats in shelters. They profit from suffering and have no business here. Pasadena must do what's right for cats and dogs by mandating spay-neuter for all of them. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much. My name is Lisa Lange, and I'm a resident of Pasadena. I live in a home that's been in my family for more than 60 years. And I've lived in other cities throughout the years, and every, in every city that I've lived in, I've volunteered for or I've donated to the local animal shelter. And I can tell you that what we have here with the Pasadena Humane Society is something we can be very proud of. We need to give the humane society, however, a leg up, and you have the power to do that by passing a comprehensive spay-neuter ordinance right away. But I would urge you to please go one step further. $60 for a licensing differential isn't enough. If you, if you look at just one, conservatively, you look at someone who purposely breeds, say, a pit bull, and sells each pup for $200, which is on the low side, they will make $800 on a very small litter. We need to take away the incentive to breed dogs and cats, and a higher license fee will help do that. This sounds high, but it's not when you consider what we're dealing with. $5 or zero for spayed or neutered animals, $1,000 if you want to breed animals and contribute to the problem, the overpopulation crisis. Simply put, breeders are killing shelter dogs' chances at a good home. If animals are paying with their lives, the very least breeders should do is pay monetarily for their deaths.
Good evening. My name is Hal Weiss, and I, I live in Pasadena. I support an ordinance to require the spay and neutering of all cats and dogs. It is the only way to prevent animal homelessness, but it's also beneficial for public safety. As you've heard already, unneutered male dogs are far more likely to attack, and unfortunately, it's usually children who are the victims of these attacks. When kids are attacked, it's also more likely to be a catastrophic injury. So making sure that all dogs, not just pit bulls, are neutered is going to help keep our communities safer. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Adam Miller from Los Angeles, and I support a mandatory spay-neuter ordinance. Thank you.
We thank you for considering passing this vital ordinance. It is a long overdue lifesaving measure for Pasadena's homeless animals, and we urge you to vote in favor of it without delay. The fact is that each and every dog and cat bred and born, on purpose or by accident, and every animal bought from a pet store or breeder often means a death sentence for an animal in an animal shelter or foster situation, sitting home, sitting hoping for a home that never comes. Santa Cruz County passed a spay-neuter ordinance in 1994, which at the time, the county's animal shelter took in approximately 8,500 cats and dogs annually, and 50% had to be euthanized. Just two years after the law went into effect, intake numbers were down, along with the euthanasia rate, and they have continued to drop. As of 2008, 4,800 animals were taken in. That's down essentially half of the pre-legislation number. And the euthanasia rate had decreased to 29%. The county also reported a decline in dog bites as a result of the ordinance. We strongly recommend that citizens who insist on keeping intact animals be required to pay $1,000 with those funds funneled, funneled into a dedicated spay-neuter fund for low-income individuals so as to reduce animal homelessness and reduce Pasadena's animal sheltering and disposition costs. So please, I hope that you will vote in favor of this ordinance right away.
I'm a long-term owner of property in the city of Pasadena. I, I urge you to pass an ordinance for, to spay and neuter dogs and cats for obvious reasons that have been stated here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
I, I ask you to do it immediately. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Wapner. I live in neighboring Glendale, and I am here in support of a mandatory spay-neuter law. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for taking public comment. I just want to say that I am in full support of a mandatory spay and neuter ordinance. Thank you very much.
I've been a resident of Pasadena for nine years. I live in District 5, and I'm in full support of the ordinance. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Rochelle Owen, and I'm just here to say I'm in full support of a mandatory spay and neuter ordinance. When you look at the amount of animals entering shelters and who have to be killed and euthanized because of these overpopulation numbers, it only makes sense to make this mandatory spay and neuter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I just want to voice my strong support for a mandatory spay-neuter ordinance as a city, as a county, as a state, as a country where facing an issue where millions of animals are entering shelters annually, and half of whom are being euthanized, and mandatory spay-neuter ordinance is really the only way to systematically root out that problem. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for taking public comment. I just want to say I also fully support the mandatory spay and neuter ordinance.
Yeah, I do not support the ordinance. I really don't understand why we're here. In 2012, it was BSL, which didn't make it out of Public Safety Committee. That turned into mandatory spay and neuter for all dogs in 2013, which you guys rejected. Then it turned back to pit bulls and BSL again, which you guys overwhelmingly rejected again, but didn't take a vote on it, instead tabled it. That's neither here nor there, I guess. And now we're back to mandatory spay and neuter for all dogs again, less than a year later. But it's really coming out of the pit bull thing. Councilman Madison gives examples of attacks from around the state and the country, but then asks everyone for their home addresses who opposes his agenda, asks to disqualify them in their point of view if they're not from Pasadena. I've seen him taking notes, who's from and who's not from Pasadena here. To that point, BSL bounces around municipalities here in California. All Pasadena has done is take the Riverside County ordinance and attempt to bring it here. Who's to say that another city wouldn't piggyback off Pasadena, whatever they decide to do, BSL or mandatory spay and neuter? It's a relevant issue for all dog owners, especially since the council actually instructed the mayor to try to change the state law that prevents breed-specific legislation. I'd also like to point out that everybody wearing a yellow sticker here is affiliated with PETA. They're not self-identifying, but their ideology is the end to all pet ownership in the United States, so of course they support mandatory spay and neuter. And lastly, Madison will probably bring it up, but this is Presley, who was the dog that was actually involved in the attack two days after the July, or the January City Council meeting, and I know I'm red here, but I just want to get this out. This was one of the three dogs. He's the surviving dog. Two of them were shot with a shotgun by cops and ended up dying on the scene. This is the surviving dog who was rescued, and he's an amazing dog. And the media said that three dogs were dragging someone down the street. But yeah, the guy didn't even have any injuries and declined medical treatment, so just keep that in mind when we're talking media versus reality. Thanks.
Thank you, City Council and Mayor, for listening to us all speak. I'm excited for the steps that Pasadena is taking regarding spaying and neutering of all cats and dogs. As a volunteer of the No Kill LA Animal Shelter and Best Friends, I know all too well how many animals are looking for forever homes.
I myself have had several pit bull fosters, and without fostering, our shelters are just overflowing, and I feel that spaying and neutering of all cats and dogs is the best solution for this problem. Thank you.
I own three. They were all rescued from the streets, one only, like a few days away from being put to sleep at only a month old, all unwanted from full shelters. And I just want to say I fully support the mandatory spay and neuter ordinance.
I've been in, I want to say Pasadena's a pretty nice place to live. I hope you're fit to meet, because I have speech impediment. I've been here since 1964, and now I'm homeowner here, so I'm really happy with being in Pasadena. I think this whole thing, like Josh Ed was going back and forth too many times, I think it's time to drop it. The whole state pretty much voted their conscience and got rid of AB-1634. I don't know why it's coming down to a city level. One out of two families in this country now has a dog. I think if you're going to try spay and neutering with everything in each individual city, that's going to go down. And like you said, where are the dogs going to come from? Going by your numbers, there was 31,120 dogs in Pasadena, 87% of them already altered. 223, I mean 253 found their way to PHS this year, 2014. 1724 were returned, rescued, or returned to their owners or adopted. That left 529. Of those, 283 were euthanized. These are according to your numbers, and I don't know how, after what I heard today, I don't know how dependable they are. Of those, 149 because they were of bad behavior, and 76 because they were sick. Yet only these 58 dogs. Why are we doing this for one year for 58 dogs? I think, I think also if you, I've got all I want to say, except I want you to read the letters. Before I came today, I looked at your website, and you had 33 positive. Do not support this, and not one negative support this.
Could you state where you live, sir?
Yes, Pasadena. And I would just like to say that I believe this is unconstitutional, what they're doing here, because this is something that happens in a person's home and in a person's house, and that the government has no duty to go into their houses. What we have a problem with is the stray dogs that are out in the streets, and that's dangerous. And so we need to know how we can make them aware of the problem, and how we can make them recognize what the situation is, so that they will do it voluntarily to the people that want to and the people that don't want to, then they can be aware of the circumstances and the consequences to those actions.
I'm actually here for a friend, even though I'm a dog owner myself. She's a, comes to a lot of dog shows in Pasadena over a number of years, and she'd called me today, says, "Mark, when we go out to Pasadena, they're having a meeting out there about an ordinance about spay and neutering." I was not familiar with this issue at all, but as a good friend, I am to her. She, she said, "If I bring my dog to Pasadena to a show, am I going to have..." She has two Tibetan Mastiffs. He said, "Are they going to come into town and have to be, you know, go through the process? A little bit scary." You know, I'm just sitting here listening to the comment on both sides of the fence. And certainly, Mr. Elwood just left here, I kind of listened to him pretty closely. The idea of putting an ordinance together, I think it's an owner's responsibility, and I think it should be looked at a little bit different naturally as far as the humane society, which is humane. You want to give those dogs that are in shelters an opportunity to get into families, but I think this should be looked at a little bit closer. Those dogs are strayed. Certainly, I think that they're on the street, and, you know, should be spayed and neutered. But as far as, it should be the owner of a dog, whether or not they want to spay or neuter their, their dog, like this gentleman had said. So just wanted to listen to the whole evening. Pleasure listening to all you people, and what you had to say was a lightning experience across the board, and I'm glad I came out to see Pasadena.
First, I wanted to state that I'm here in opposition of any sort of mandatory spay-neuter. And like Josh said, the people here from PETA, their end goal of PETA has been stated to be to totally eradicate pet ownership, which is why they euthanize about 97% of their intake in animals consistently. As a member of the Pasadena Obedience Club, I help out with the classes. I'm around dogs that are fixed, not fixed, purebred, mixed breed, just about everything. And in the classes, people come because they want help training their dog. They want help with their dog for various reasons. In one of the recent classes, a dog came in that was highly aggressive, and by the time it left, it was not. Not because it was intact or because it was fixed, but because the people didn't know how to deal with it, and because, not because people were irresponsible, but because they were responsible and they found an option on how to train their dog. The biggest problems with, with aggression and overpop, this supposed overpopulation isn't with dogs that are intact, it's with people that are irresponsible, people that don't want to train their dog, don't want to make sure that their dog is kept in the yard, don't want to do any of these things. Personally, I adopted a dog that was fixed. He was highly aggressive. About two weeks ago, he got his advanced canine good citizenship because we worked with him, we trained him. It's not a matter of being intact or not. It's a matter of responsibility and the consequences of being irresponsible.
If you are typical American, you own a dog. Most likely, you will own a golden retriever. What we are not talking about, and that's what these ordinance fail to do, is responsible and irresponsible dog ownership. What they do in Canada, in Canada, it's mandatory to chip all animals. If that animal is found wandering around, is picked up by the humane society, returned to the owner and charged 50 bucks. The coffers in Canada are overwhelming. They have superb facilities. None of these mandatory ordinances are in place, and we continue to fail to address positive reinforcement to dog ownership. All of us here are responsible dog owners, that's why we're here. Irresponsible dog owners are not present, and they're not in the gallery. We're all passionate about animals, that's why we're advocating for them. We want the best for them, but we also want the best for us and our experience. We have all experienced that, from little kids to grownups. There are many, many stories where people in their deadbeds bring a smile when they bring a dog. Please, consider that they're... Please, consider that this is really a responsibility of us to consider other options, including responsible dog owners.
I'm Jennifer Roberts from Arcadia, also a member of the Pasadena Dog Training Club, the Cavalier King Charles Spaniel Club of Southern California, and a group called Concerned Dog Owners of California. Let me first say that the gentleman from the Humane Society said that over the past 30 years, voluntary spay and neuter has been successful. So why do we need mandatory? If it's been successful, perhaps it's because the animal shelter is in the business of selling dogs. I tried to get a dog to adopt from the Humane Society, and it was going to be $400. So they sell dogs, and perhaps because there aren't as many to sell, we need to have a new ordinance that will charge dog breeders big fees. I agree with the last speaker who said, why are we penalizing responsible breeders with higher fees when irresponsible people who are dog owners will continue to be irresponsible regardless of the fees, if there is a fee, if there is not a fee, if the fee is $1,000 or if it's 50. If they're irresponsible, they are going to be irresponsible. I would suggest that when the Concerned Dog Owners of California did a survey about why dogs are in the shelter, the majority were turned in by owners who, one, couldn't afford the vet bills, and, two, had lost their job or were downsizing where they lived and had to turn their dogs in. It's unfortunate that that happens, but I don't see big bunches of dogs running the streets in my city, and I don't see them in Pasadena when I come here. I've attended the Pasadena Kennel Club shows for the last several years, and I would hate for your community to lose that over something like this.
My name is Cindy Chick. I live in the city of Pasadena. I am against mandatory spay and neuter. I know that when you're looking at these ordinances, what you're trying to do is have a positive effect on the community, but I don't think you've got a winner with this one. I think this one is unnecessary, I think it's ineffective, and I think it has the potential to be harmful to pets. And I know that's not what you want. First off, is it unnecessary? If you look at the statistics in the staff report, I'm, I'm really surprised, because it shows, uh, Pasadena Humane Society has been very successful at getting a lot of people to spay and neuter their dogs. So you have 13% of dogs coming in that are euthanized, and of that 13%, most of those are either have behavior problems or they are, um, ill. So what they're doing is, they're successfully taking these dogs in, and they're successfully rehoming the rest of them, which I think is exactly what we want. I think they should be commended for that. So, but I think that makes this actually unnecessary. I think they've done a great job. I think this is a very ineffective law, I think it would be very difficult to enforce it. I think what you will end up with is people no longer licensing their dogs, if they ever did. Uh, I think that, that, I don't know how it's gonna prevent dogs from roaming, that is irresponsible dog ownership. I have an unneuter dog, and I assure you, he does not roam, because I do not let him roam. He's not allowed to. So I, it's, it, it really does come back to the owners and the responsible dog ownership. I don't think that there is any, I haven't seen any evidence that altered dogs are less likely to bite. I think that there's actually a lot of research that can go either way on that, so, you know, it's, I, I don't, I don't know that just because a dog is unaltered, I, I, I think that that's not necessarily the case, that they are going to be more aggressive.
Ma'am, would you bring your statement to a close?
Yes. Um, one of the things that I'm most concerned about is the idea of altering these dogs before they are mature, um, at six months of age, that there are lots of studies that show that that is not healthy for the dog. And again, to me, that this is the most important thing. You've got incontinence, you've got hip dysplasia, you've got cancer. There are a lot of things about neutering a dog before it's sexually mature. And I don't think that that is really what the City Council is, is after. So you have-
Ma'am, may I ask you to complete your statement?
Yes. You have, the city has a handle on, on, on pet overpopulation. Um, I don't think these laws are gonna help vicious dogs, roaming dogs, but I do think you need to enforce the laws that currently exist.
I'm representing the Cavalier King Charles Spaniel Club of the United States. We are the oldest breed club in the United States outside of AKC, and the reason that I'm here is to reinforce what all of these good people who oppose your ordinance have to say. Um, I don't know what the council would like to hear. I could answer almost anything if, if somebody like, um, Mr. Kennedy has any questions. I thought you were most articulate in your questioning. I'd be happy to answer that, I'm just offering that instead of a canned statement. Um, otherwise, I can tell you that it is really detrimental at six months of age to neuter or spay an animal, particularly from a responsible owner. I, the new, the, the original mandatory spay and neuter laws, as we have heard of them, were originated by a veterinarian who was the former president of the Ameri, of the California Veterinary Medical Association, Dr. John Hamel. And he is horrified to see where this has gone, because when he helped devise these, he was thinking of dogs that were roaming the streets. He was thinking of dogs that were not responsibly bred. He certainly wasn't thinking of everybody's dog who had a responsible owner, because the health consequences to dogs are too dire, as was mentioned previously. I don't think anybody's hit on the growth plate issue. A dog's growth plates are not fully closed, and they need hormones to do this, until they're 18 months of old, age. It does vary from breed to breed. But what this means is, we can have problems with hip dysplasia, we can have problems with injury.
Ma'am, would you bring your statement to a close?
Uh, also incontinence in females, and this law would be inequitable to responsible owners, and also to people-
Ma'am, may I ask you to bring your statement to a close?
And it also would penalize people without means. And it will actually mean fewer dogs are registered. Fewer dogs, that's less money and less results. It'll all go underground.
Hi, I'm Dana Blafer. I'm a property and business owner in Pasadena, and I do want to talk about the issue of animal welfare. There is a growing body of medical evidence to suggest that spay and neuter, particularly early spay and neuter, may be medically detrimental to, mostly the research has been in dogs. Um, a recent, uh, study published in the February 1st, 2014, Journal of the American Veterinary Medical Association, uh, looking at 2,500 Vishlas, showed across the board an increase in all kinds of cancers in dogs that were spayed and neutered, particularly in the younger spayed and neutered group, and also an increase in fear-based behaviors. There was a study a couple of years ago at UC Davis that showed similar results with not only cancer, but orthopedic disease, hip dysplasia, cruciate ligament injuries, because we're altering the nature of the animal. An ordinance like this is going to affect the responsible people, they're the ones that are going to potentially want to follow the ordinance, and they're the people that are educated enough to be able to look at what's best for their pet and make a responsible choice. It's not an ordinance that's going to affect the stray, spay, and neuter population where the problem really exists and where the efforts need to be focused.
Mayor, can I just ask a point of clarification? Is the current speaker a veterinarian?
I'm a veterinarian, yes. 23 years, UC Davis graduate.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good afternoon, or rather, good evening. Um, I'm from Los Angeles Eagle Rock neighborhood specifically. I, um, train my dog at the Pasadena's Obedience Club. I have two dogs, a pit bull and a puggle. Uh, my concern is that, um, the unintended consequences of this ordinance, I'm against it. The unintended consequences of this ordinance are that you're gonna drive pet owners into the shadows, underground. As it is, you have only 30%, less than a third of your, uh, dog population in, in the city licensed. So if you put out a mandatory spay and neuter ordinance, you're gonna drive people underground because you're gonna be afraid, the media's gonna go crazy on this ordinance, and you're not gonna have even fewer people coming out to register their dogs. That's my number one concern. My second concern is that this report has a lot of statistical concerns. Uh, the canvassing effort by the Pasadena Humane Society is very unclear what their data show, as some of the council member asked questions about, and the data that's presented here is also very concerning about the, uh, extrapolation for the cats. So I have concerns about this report, I think you should not rely on this report, and as a result, you should not pass this ordinance. And finally, I really do think it comes down to education. You need to focus on the owners who are irresponsible, that's where you need to put your money, that's where you need to put your resources, not on putting a mandatory requirement for mandatory spay neutering. You already have excellent programs in place in the city that are obviously doing a very good job of manager, of, of spaying and neutering your dogs. Why make something mandatory that doesn't need to be in place? Need to focus your resources, resources on stray dogs and owners who are not responsible. That's where you need to put your efforts on.
I am a member of the Orange Empire Dog Club. I am the president of the Los Angeles Doberman Pinscher Club. We do hold our shows at Brookside Park in Pasadena every year. I am also the Doberman Pinscher Club of America Legislative Director. Based on that, well, I've done many, many hours of research, and since Dana already explained the problems with early spay and neuter as far as health is concerned, the research that I have done is on how many dogs go underground, how many people do not register their dogs, get licenses. When you don't get a license, you don't go to the vet, you don't get rabies shots. Now you have a new problem, especially in an area like Pasadena that does have a lot of raccoons. That, and raccoons do carry rabies. Mandatory spay and neuter does not work. It did not work in Santa Cruz, and it will not work in Pasadena. It is not working in the city of Riverside. It is detrimental to the being of the dogs, and the responsible ownerships, they take care of their dogs, they go ahead and they license them, but we don't spay and neuter them because of other reasons. I thank you for your consideration, and obviously, I'm opposition to mandatory spay and neuter.
And I've lived in San Marino for 25 years. Um, I'm a nurse, and I've worked at Huntington Hospital for quite a long time. Um, I'm the president of the Pasadena Obedience Club this year, Pasadena Obedience Club, but I also do rescue, and I have always licensed my dogs in Pasadena, whether they have been neutered or unneutered. Um, I have a Cavalier King Charles Spaniel that I do obedience with, and I have a German Shepherd that I do Shetland with. One is neutered and one is not neutered. Um, I believe in choice. I believe that responsible pet owners and pet people like myself that do multiple things with their dogs, everything from confirmation to obedience, to rally, to Shetland, should be able to be responsible, and so therefore, we don't need this rule.
And I'm a resident of the city of Pasadena, and I strongly oppose this ordinance. I think it is going to be ineffective, it is going to be draconian, and it is going to unfairly burden responsible dog owners such as myself, who, contrary to what the animal rights fanatics would have you believe, in fact, take, um, very good care of my purebred dogs. Uh, as a matter of fact, I just spent $350 having my dog's hips x-ray to ensure that I would not breed a dog that would have hip dysplasia or produce puppies that would have hip dysplasia. So this notion that people who breed dogs are in it for the money is ludicrous. I would also like to reiterate, nobody, nobody makes money selling, responsibly breeding and selling purebred dogs. I would also like to remind the council, um, that as regards unwanted dogs, um, it seems odd to me that if we have such an overabundance of unwanted puppies, why, according to the Centers for Disease Control, do we import into this country 300,000 puppies a year that come into this country without adequate documentation as to health, vaccinations, and the other kinds of safeguards that come when you get a dog from a responsible breeder or from a rescue organization? 300,000 puppies a year to populate shelters to provide quote-unquote "rescue opportunities" for people who really just want a nice puppy. Thank you.
I live in Pasadena in District 6. Um, I teach at Pasadena High School. I'm been a member of the Kennel Club of Pasadena for about 30 years, and Pasadena obedience, and I think this, this measure, although we all promote, or we're all in favor of spaying and neutering when appropriate, I just think it's, um, it misses the mark completely, misses the mark completely. Many breeds are too young at six months of age to be healthfully spayed and neutered. Um, I think laws like this don't affect everyone equally, and I think education through our fabulous Pasadena Humane Society really needs to be the focus. We've really got to showcase that place more. I know for a fact that little outreach is done at the high school level, and when I talk with my kids in my classroom about the work that I do with dogs, they're fascinated, they're interested, and they learn from me about licensing requirements and stuff, and they teach their parents. And so I know if it weren't for my own personal bent, that that wouldn't be getting out there. And so we need to do more to integrate our children with learning about their animals, not putting out laws to kind of make people fearful of, oh, this is gonna be, you know, a mandatory thing. We also have such a diverse community. A lot of people in various cultures don't understand the good side of mandatory, or the good side of spaying and neutering at an appropriate age, or why you would need to or want to, and, and how to be responsible pet owners when a dog is intact. So I think we're just missing the mark on this one, and I oppose it strongly.
So I just want to discuss that with mandatory spay and neuter, you're gonna be spending money on enforcement instead of spending money on fixing the problem. And what the problem is, is that you need to educate, you need community outreach, you need low-cost spay and neuter, free spay and neuter, and not just low-cost and free spay and neuter, but accessible. So a lot of families that are low-income don't have the accessibility to go to, let's say, the Pasadena Humane Society, so the accessibility of it. In regard specifically to the feet differential, Councilman Gordo, that you were stating, at the end of the day, I don't think it's about necessarily what is the feet differential, it's about the opportunities that the, um, that the community has in regards to spaying and neutering their animals. Um, as everyone was saying here, it's about responsible pet ownership, and I want also to take into consideration that the city of Los Angeles has mandatory spay and neuter, and they've had mandatory spay and neuter, and it's not working. And as Ms. Tauscher pointed out in Riverside County, how their selective enforcement, there is selective enforcement going on currently right now in the city of Los Angeles. The low-income communities of South Los Angeles are being targeted by, by animal control, and what it leads to is the people relinquishing their animals. Luckily, there is Downtown Dog Rescue that has the intervention program, but we hear about this. This is, this is happening at this moment. So if we look at just our nearby city, we know that it's not working. Mandatory spay and neuter isn't the way to go, and my dogs are spayed and neutered, I agree with spay and neutering, but forcing a community to spay and neuter their dogs, going into their homes and requiring that, isn't, isn't the way. It's education, it's community outreach, it's providing accessibility and the resources for it. And lastly, I just want to say a quick point about trap spay, um, for the cats, about trap, spay, neuter, and release. Um, that is something that perhaps the Pasadena, um, council should consider in regards to the cat population situation, and, um, mandatory spay and neuter isn't the only way to prevent homelessness.
And I'm a resident of Pasadena. Um, I've volunteered at a shelter, been involved in breed rescue, um, I've also had purebred dogs from responsible breeders, and I do a lot of competing in a whole variety of dog shows, dog sports. I've also been bitten by a dog. I've also had three of my dogs attacked within Pasadena by a Labrador Retriever, not a pit bull, go figure. But, um, even with all that, I do not support this at all. If this would actually work, I might support it, but I think you've heard a lot of, um, comments about why it's not effective. Uh, that being said, I wanted to point out two different things in the staff report that I think, um, are sort of technical errors that need to be addressed, even if this does move forward, which I hope it doesn't. One is to qualify as a competition dog, um, to get the unaltered dog exemption. They, uh, need to compete within 365 days, the previous 365 days, but the issue is, for certain sports and venues, they can't even compete until they're 12 months old for like lure coursing, 15 months for agility. So you have a lot of dogs that are gonna be caught in this weird dimbo where they're not complying, even though it seems like the intent is that they would be exempt. The other thing is enforcement, um, under that section, it cites chapters 612 and 616 of the municipal code. Um, those deal with licensing and not picking up dog experiment and dogs running at large. But it doesn't address 618, which deals with nuisance dogs, including dogs with aggression issues. So I'm not sure if aggression and attacks is an issue that it's trying to be addressed as ordinance, why that's not included in here. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Laura London, I live in North Hollywood, and I'm a professional dog trainer. I work with Downtown Dog Rescue, Angel City Pitbull- I work with Downtown Dog Rescue, Angel City Pit Bulls, Wags and Walks, and a number of Best Friend Coalition partners throughout Los Angeles. What I've found in Los Angeles mandatory spay-neuter with the South LA Intervention Program is that mandatory spay-neuter targets the people who don't have the resources. It targets the underserved. That Flint Ridge presentation today was awesome, and that was an underserved community that's like taking control. Those are, that same community is going to get hit with this. The reason, number one reason people surrender their dogs is because they can't afford spay and neuter. And the reason they have to surrender them is because they get targeted by enforcement. And the ones who get targeted are the male dogs, because you can see they're pack and heat. You can't see if the females have been spayed or neutered, so you're just targeting male dogs belonging to poor people. Unintentional, unwanted, unsanctioned breeding is really where we need to stick our finger in the dam here. When people are selling puppies in Penny Saver and on Craigslist, to sell a dog, breeders, you have to have license, right? You have to prove that you can sell the dog. If you're not licensed, this registered breeder, you better get a big fat ticket and spend some time in the pokey, because you are out to make money, and you're a backyard breeder and you're part of the problem. It's not the responsible breeders who are the problem. Fees, sixty bucks more isn't going to stop. It's like three hundred dollars more in L.A., and they just don't license their dog. They just don't do it. It doesn't matter.
Ma'am, are you close to the end of this?
I think I'm really close. Yeah. I think, I mean, in general, I think spay and neuter is great. You've got to control the flow, but mandatory isn't the way to do it. Thank you.
First and foremost, I want to commend this council. I stood up here in January, several of us in this audience did, when you were trying to pass a pit bull spay and neuter only. You listened and you changed it from pit bull to all dog and cats. So thank you for doing that. I'm on the fence on this, and if you look at my card, I wrote both. I am one hundred percent for spay and neutering. I used to volunteer at Baldwin Park Shelter. I helped transport for rescued dogs that they pull out of Downey Shelter now. I have three rescues of my own. So again, I'm totally for spay and neutering. It needs to be done. Problem I have is you have the Humane Society come up here. Last year, you asked them to do canvassing. When I sat in this room in January, you said, "Humane Society, come back in July with your canvas report." Where in July? You have no canvas report. You asked them for it at the beginning of, when we started this spay and neuter thing. They don't actually have a real canvas report for you guys. So as far as I'm concerned, and what you guys should be concerned with is everything they submitted to you, get a black marquee pen and just put a big fat X through it. It means absolutely nothing. Nothing at all. And quite honestly, I wasn't even going to speak before you until she came up here and couldn't answer your questions. They made absolutely no sense to me. But again, there was something that was in the presentation that caught my eye also where it was brought up two hundred and eighty, I think it was two hundred and eighty-three or two hundred and eighty-five dogs were euthanized by the Pasadena Humane Society due to aggression.
Ma'am, your time has expired.
Okay. Thirty seconds more. Sorry. The fact is, you can fix a dog, you're not going to end aggression. It's all about ownership, responsible ownership. And somebody mentioned selective enforcing? I will put a thousand bucks right now with you, Mr. Madison. Your number one target's going to be pit bulls. Number one. If you guys pass this, it's going to be you going after pit bull owners. It's that simple. Thousand bucks, okay?
Ma'am, have you completed your statement?
Hello. I'm here mainly, I was here in January, and I was listening to Mr. Madison and his desire to get rid of the pit bulls. So that's why I came along with my two daughters. I'm very pleased that that is not what's going on tonight. I'm so up in the air about spay and neuter. All of my animals are spayed and neutered, and I think it's responsible. We're all responsible. But I think what we need to do is educate. We need to target the people that backyard breed. Mandatory spay and neuter, these guys said it, it's not the answer. I'm going to still do it. I do believe in it. I do rescue, and I'm a teacher. And as a teacher, if we could get the Pasadena Humane Society and all the cities to send educated people to the classes of these children and teach these kids so they can teach their parents on the importance of spaying and neutering and being responsible, that's what we need to target. The people that aren't here, the people that don't understand that when a kid comes to me, I'm a middle school teacher, and they come to me and say, "Mrs. Porter, hey, I have nine little puppies, isn't that great?" And I tell them, "That's so sad." And they say, "Well, but why? You do rescue, you love animals." And I said, "That's right." And I try to educate them why that just killed nine animals out of a shelter. So we need to educate. That's what you need to start doing, please, is sending people to the little kids in our schools to educate them so they can educate their parents. Thank you.
First of all, thank you for bringing this to your attention. I think it's a really important cause. I'm Veronica Ferentzeli. I'm a homeowner of Pasadena. I'm a business owner of Pasadena, and I also founded a charity here in Pasadena. I also work in Riverside County where they do canvas. So I'm aware, and because of their progressive spay and neuter program and then their involvement in their community, I decided to work out there. And I now represent a spay-neuter clinic of one hundred animals that I spay-neuter. I want to thank you for bringing attention to this cause and bringing it on the table. So I'm aware of what happens, and the people that come up are low-income, and I know that they need help. If we say mandatory, and I am for mandatory, because I'm the person who goes in the freezer and sees all the puppies filled, and there's ten barrels every day refilled with puppies and cats, mostly cats, and dogs and pit bulls. And they are not all aggressive, obviously, because they're puppies. So I'm all for mandatory, but we do have to offer it to the low-income, and there are people like me and rescue groups that will do that. I only am a vet that charges me sixty dollars, and there's most veterinarians charge like three hundred to five hundred. It's an important cause, and I think we have to regulate and make it so that if someone does have a litter and say, "Oops, I have a litter," we should have like a thousand-dollar fine because they're just making money off of Craigslist and they just don't care. I live it, I see it. People come up to my clinics with shoestrings on their little dogs. They want to be spayed and neutered. This is not about the breeders, they're responsible, but I don't want the blanket of the umbrella of the breeders to protect the gangster breeders, because they're just breeding their dogs aggressive and they feed them, don't feed them, so they get more aggressive. I'm going to stop talking. But I live it and I know it, and the freezers are full, so I'm for mandatory until we can figure it out what to do is right. But I thank you for bringing this to our attention.
I was enjoying watching this at home, and it suddenly dawned on me, if I didn't come here and speak and you guys voted against this ordinance, I'd feel quite guilty. So I urge you to adopt the ordinance. Some, as you know, I live over on overlooking Defender's Park, and there are people who are walking their dogs over there constantly, and it's a great spot for the people who are monitoring licenses to check out dogs. But I've heard a lot of stuff tonight that didn't make sense, just as I heard in the last two dramatic council sessions that discussed the issue. But fortunately, tonight, we're only discussing spay and neuter, and I trust you all read the editorial in the Pasty and Star News in January that made a very good case that cities should pass spay and neuter laws. And for that reason, there has to be a reason that the L.A. city and county laws requires all cats and dogs to be sprayed or neutered. That's L.A. city and L.A. county require all dogs and cats to be spayed or neutered. Why should Pasadena be any difference? Do we know more than our erstwhile fathers? I mean, it makes no sense to debate this issue. We're not talking about pit bulls. I have articles after articles about the dangers of pit bulls and how many people they've killed and what have you, but we're not talking about that. We're talking about spay and neutering. And in closing, just let me say that I heard one speaker say that this was prejudiced against the poor who cannot afford the procedures. This is sheer nonsense, as we know. There are many volunteer groups that will take care of that, and our own wonderful twenty million dollar facility over there has a staff that does that every day. So I urge you to adopt the ordinance. Thank you.